Good evening, everybody. Could you please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. And to the Republic where we stand, one nation in America, indivisible, and infinite in its essence.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we're just so grateful that you've given us such a great place to live. We ask that you be with this commission to make the best decisions possible for this city. We're thankful the way they held off on us last time. We prayed for those in Central Arkansas and Eastern Arkansas that did get here. Right, it's the little guys from crap.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our April 4th Planning Commission meeting. Do roll call.
Austin.
Here.
Cardiel.
Here.
Cloud.
Here.
Compton.
Here.
Couch.
Here.
Hussein.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'd move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Motion from Dr. Compton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Austin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We do have three items that we won't hear tonight. The first item is the Schuber Mitchell Homes. Second is the James and Michelle Dugger. And the CCO Event Center will be tabled and not be heard tonight. Okay, first item on our agenda is PV NRT Incorporated, presented by Rachel Silvestri and Erin Oliver. Okay, if you could come to the mic.
Hi.
And just tell us a little bit about what you're doing. It's a rezoning.
Yes, we purchased this property a couple of years ago, and it is zoned residential, and we have it on the market. And we'd like to switch it to commercial to sell.
Okay. Do we have comments from?
No, I need you staff comments.
Staff comments.
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use or zoning requests is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, encourage plans to integrate to commercial areas by discouraging spot commercial development and the stringing out of commercial development along streets, and to encourage more pedestrian-oriented commercial sites.
Any comments? Now, do we have any comments from the audience? Okay, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Cloud.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 25th.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is North Heights Edition, presented by Blue &amp; Associates. You want to come back to it?
Yeah.
Nathan, you going to cover this one?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, thank you. My name is Nathan Crouch with Blue &amp; Associates, representing the client and the survey company. And this presentation, or this project is replating a lot, a subdivision lot, with an existing home on the lot. And the property is just shy of a quarter acre, and they're looking to split it up in order to separate the house onto its own lot, and then create an additional lot to sell in the back. Since the home is existing, it is encroaching into some of the building setbacks. And following this, under the Board of Zoning Adjustments Agenda, we'll be asking for variance for the encroachment into the setbacks on the existing building.
We're really set up to hear all this at the same time, so you don't have to wait.
Okay.
So basically, we have an existing structure that encroaches on the setbacks. This house, existing house, has been there since the 60s maybe?
I'm not sure when it was built, but it's aged.
It's been there a long time, and so it's encroached for probably that long. And so it's a 19-foot on Franker Street and 23 on Sanders Avenue, and that would be because of the existing structure. So we need to take the variances first, and then the replat is now, you see it, it's a long, narrow lot on the north side, and a standard lot, and now the lot lines will be split separate, north and south, instead of east and west. Okay?
Do I have any comments from the commission?
Or the audience?
Any comments from the audience?
Is there access to the new lot, so to speak?
Well, it has frontage on a public street. They'll have to create a driveway access.
A curb cut?
Yeah, a curb cut on Sanders when they get ready to build something on it.
I just couldn't tell from this picture where the street was.
Yeah, Sanders. Can we take the variances together? Okay, it's a call for the vote.
This is a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Tyler.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Do we have any other staff comments on this one, on the replat itself?
I head with the Building Department. I'm a little bit concerned in that the electricity to this house crosses the other lot. And if you look at it, there is no power along the streets. So there's no way to get electricity to the house once you split, take the power down and split this off.
Okay.
There's no easements. You would have to run an easement across the top and then bring it in.
Is that easement acceptable to you and your department?
Yeah, as long as you put it on there, yeah. And we can vote, you guys can vote on it today, and they'll put the easement on and everything will work.
Well, okay, so the question is, will that power line stay where it is?
No, they're going to have to take that down.
Right, and relocate it and all that.
So they need to provide an easement from the telephone pole that's right at the corner of the existing lot, and then bring it over so they can bring power to that house.
Okay, so what that's saying is, the final plat can't be filed, signed and filed until that, either there's an easement across it in its existing location, or it has been relocated. Okay? Okay, so everybody understands, if you show up tomorrow or at a council meeting next week, it would be subject to all that getting done before we'll sign off on it.
And so does the work need to have occurred on the ground, or does it just need to be shown on the plat as an easement?
It has to be done before you can file the plat.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, that's my whole point.
Yeah.
I'm the last one to sign, and I won't sign it until that easement and that line has been moved.
Understood.
Okay. Okay, so that would be the comment, staff comment, that needs to be included as part of this motion to approve, subject to that staff comment.
Do I have a motion to approve?
You do. Subject to that staff comment.
By Mr. Peyton. Do I have a?
Second.
Second by Dr. Compton.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Normally, I would say, if you want this to go to council next week, the ordinance needs to be in our office by tomorrow at noon. But you can go ahead and put it on the agenda, understanding that it can't be approved till all that gets done. It can't be signed until all that gets done. Okay?
Next is L-23-11 Dollar Tree, presented by High Tide Consultants.
Good evening, Beau Barbera with High Tide Consultants. I'm representing Delaney Property Group, the developer for the Dollar Tree. The site that we're developing is an existing out parcel in the Harps Shopping Center on Butterfield Coach Road. It's an existing pad that was built with the overall center. The building will be placed on that pad with parking added, landscaping, drainage and utilities, most of which are already in place, that we'll just be making connections to. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, staff has only that we will be needing a shared parking agreement from the developer prior to final approval.
In addition to standard engineering comments, please provide Springdale's handicap ramp detail, which is Springdale Standard Detail, SDB2.
Okay, do I have any comments from the audience? Okay, this will be a motion, subject to staff comments.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Parker. Second by Mr. Tyler.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Okay, that passes?
Alright, thank you.
Next, we have R-23-15 Gonzalez Family Revocable Trust, presented by Alberto Gonzalez.
Sorry, Alberto has been detained, and he asked me to represent him.
Okay, do you have something in writing giving you authorization to represent him?
No, but I have been in conversation with him. I really don't know why he didn't make it.
Okay, unless you have written authorization to represent him, we can't hear it. Is he on his way, or?
Supposedly, he's supposed to be in here at 5:00.
Okay, we can table this till later in the meeting. I can't allow you to represent him until we have something in writing saying that you're authorized to represent him.
I understand, I'll try to contact you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the next item is R-23-16 Jose Antonio Mesa Serrano, presented by Jose Antonio Mesa Serrano.
Hello, good evening. Yeah, I would like to make the residential as last, I guess, agriculture to commercial, just to have a small fleet of dump trucks just to park in there.
Okay, staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive plan indicates commercial use for the area. The reselling request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan, and is recommended for approval as your adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations.
Do I have any comments from the audience? This is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Parker.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
That passes.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to the council on the 25th.
Thank you.
The next item is R-23-17 Ellen X Investments, presented by Brandon Rush.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, Brandon Rush with ESI. This is just a proposed rezoning to SF2. There's a single-family and PUD around it, but happy to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential use. The reselling request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility and environmental factors.
Do we have any comments from the audience? This is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Tyler.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 25th.
Thank you.
The next item is R-23-18 First Choice Auto Repair, presented by Micah Parks.
Good evening. We are wanting to change from an industrial I-1 to a commercial property.
Mr. Parks, you're here with her too.
He's nervous in front of the microphone, so I get to talk.
That's fine, that's fine. As long as we know we have the property under here. The comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the area. The reselling request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. The comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, encourages development of office and professional uses to provide a transition between residential areas and more intense uses with reasonable building height limitations, adequate buffering and landscaping to ensure compatibility.
Do we have any comments from the audience? This is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Dr. Compton.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 25th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is FB-23-01 Independence Realty Group, presented by Blue &amp; Associates.
Thank you, Nathan Crouch with Blue &amp; Associates. Our subject property is located off, at the corner of Velma Avenue and Dodson Street, and consists of five lots. After the rezoning, our, well, they're requesting to rezone the property to seed district NR1. And following rezoning, they plan on putting together a development plan and putting in several duplexes on this property and be rentals. But at this time, they're asking for the rezone to the NR1 district. And then, upon gaining approval of this, that we'd come back with development plans after that.
Staff comments?
This amendment, this asking for a seed district NR1 is suitable to that area and is what was approved with the seed district itself by the council in 2021, is recommended for approval.
Do we have any comments from the audience? Okay, this is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote. By Mr. Cardiel.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 25th.
Thank you.
The next item is RP-23-05 Zachary Edition, presented by Nathan Crouch.
Pardon me. Hello, thank you. This one is a lot combination. What we have on the plat shows two lots that are on the same deed, but they haven't ever been put onto the same parcel. What he's wanting to do is combine these two lots in order to be able to construct a shop building, accessory building back in the backyard. It does have access coming down to Huntsville Avenue. On the city's GIS map, it shows these two lots without that access coming down. This morning, I went and discussed the access with one of our project managers. In our company, the project managers draw the property boundaries. And I said, prove to me that this has the access on the deed. And what he did is he pulled up two previous surveys, one from 1980, one from 1988, and pointed out that this property has been surveyed the same way for over 40 years. The deed indeed does show that long leg coming down to Huntsville Avenue. It's not an access easement, it is part of the parcel. And so what we're asking for here is to combine these lots. And I can take questions if you have any for me.
Staff comments?
Staff has standard comments, in addition to Blue &amp; Associates providing the warranty deed that he referenced a moment ago. And I believe he emailed that earlier, but I have not yet had a chance to look at it today to take that off of our list of comments.
Do we have any comments from the audience?
Engineering, have any comments?
Nope.
Okay.
This is a motion, correct?
This is a subject to staff comments, yeah.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Yeah. And I just want to make a, this is zoned SF2, so only SF2 stuff. Right, and it's really for an accessory structure. You can't have an accessory structure if the house, if it's not on the same lot with the house. Oops, the rain came. I'll make a motion, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Parker. Second by Mr. Tyler.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
That passes?
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in our office by noon tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
The next item is RP-23-06 Dell's Woods Subdivision, presented by Engineering Services.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. We're making a slight lot line adjustment between lots 14 and 15. I'll answer any questions.
Any staff comments?
Any staff comments? I mean, just standard comments of a replat, so. But still a motion, subject to staff comments.
This is a motion, subject to staff comments.
I'll make a motion, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Parker. The second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hussein.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
That passes?
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday, the ordinance needs to be in our office by tomorrow at noon.
Yes, ma'am.
Our next item is FP-23-02 Barbary Court, Phase 1, presented by Engineering Services.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. Here presenting the final plat for Barbary Court. Eighty-seven single-family residential lots, and I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Planning staff has only standard comments at this time.
Engineering, have any comments? Standard comments for engineering as well, which include the final punch list from the walkthrough and then the final plat checklist items.
This is a motion, subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Tyler. Do I have a second?
Couch.
Second by Mr. Couch.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
That passes.
Ordnance needs to be in our office by tomorrow at noon, if you want to go to council next Tuesday.
Thank you.
The next item is Large Scale Developments, L-23-10 Williams Tractor, presented by Barry Puckett.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Resubmission tonight for the large scale. The variance for landscaping is location-based only. We're asking to put some plannings in a different location from where they were originally approved. And the design standard reference landscaping and the screening, the screening is for the large dumpsters. We have 30-yard and 40-yard containers on this site, tractor dealership. We get a lot of wood crates and other large debris. We have some very large dumpsters, so we're requesting a variance on that container screening.
Any staff comments?
Engineering's only comment is just to meet our completion and construction standards so that we can terminate the grading permit.
For planning, we have frontage landscaping is required in accordance with Chapter 56, which a variance has been requested. Perimeter landscaping is required in accordance with Chapter 56, which a variance has been requested. Interior parking area landscaping is required in accordance with Chapter 56. Show the total area of the parking lot, the percentage of landscaping required and the percentage of landscaping provided include a drawing that identifies all areas included in the calculations. Comment on that is, multiple trees and bushes are dead and need to be replaced. A lighting plan is required displaying at least one-foot candle in all parking and pedestrian areas. Previously, the lights on the site were different than what was actually on the plans. Do they match now? I've been told that they do match, but I haven't been out there to verify that. Trash containers, trash compactors, recycling bins shall be screened from public view on all four sides with a solid fence, wall or gate constructed of cedar, redwood, masonry or other compatible building material and shall be appropriately landscaped. Variance has been asked for that. Also, it states that the screening should be at least one foot taller than the dumpster, which in that one picture, the dumpster is taller than the screening.
Is that the standard-sized dumpsters can be there all the time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So you're asking to let the fence stay as it is and not totally screen the dumpster?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the foundation landscaping, you've done additional landscaping? That equals the amount that needs to be done as if foundation was there? Because that's what was originally approved?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then you still have an area that for future development, that you need to get grass established? And I think it has been seeded, and it's got straw on it.
Yes, ma'am, it's still to be, it's still to be hydroseeded.
Okay, still to be hydroseeded, you haven't done it yet?
We have seeded it and strawed it, but it calls for hydroseeding, and we have scheduled with the company to hydroseed.
And we do have a bond to cover those things?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we do have a bond already in place that covers those items itself. So really, all we have left is the height of the screening fence on the dumpster, and the trees that are dead need to be replaced, and verifying all of those bushes and stuff that were installed. Ron, am I right? Where'd Ron go? I lost him. We're good? The dead trees and stuff need to be replaced, and we need to verify the number. That's the other thing that's left, right? Okay.
Add that in the lighting.
Okay, it does now match the plan? Okay, and we'll verify that too. If it's not, we'll need to get one or the other of them fixed.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
Does the commission have any questions?
Where's the dumpster? Is it in the rear of the building? I saw a picture of it, but I don't.
So this is a very large site, there are two buildings. It's in the back of the shop, which is where most of that debris and the, It's in the back of the shop, which is where most of that debris and the, so these are large crated implements that come in for the tractors and large parts. Some of these are four-by-six timbers that come off of these crates, but it's directly outside of the shop, but it is next to the drive, I'm sorry, where you come up to the business on the north side in between the two buildings.
And it was relocated from where it was originally located on the plan?
Yes ma'am.
You moved it to a different side and screened it? Is it screened on all four sides?
No ma'am, it's screened on the two sides towards the actual drive.
Okay, so your variance is not only for the height, but only screening two sides instead of all of them?
Yes ma'am.
Is there a reason why it can't be screened on all the sides?
It's when the company that empties those dumpsters comes out, they bring an empty container, they have to drop that container, pick up the container that's there, drop it, take the empty one, place it where it goes, then pick up the other one again. It's quite cumbersome with thirty- and forty-yard containers if you're in a fully enclosed scenario there.
Okay, so that's what the variance for the landscaping and screening is. Landscaping is there's additional landscaping in other locations on the site, so we should have the same amount of landscaping, and this is the screening of the dumpster with a shorter than the, than the dumpsters that are there, and only on two sides. Okay?
Why was the shorter fence put in to start with?
That's what we showed on, on the revised drawing, so that's what we put in, to be completely candid.
Okay, I guess the question really is, did we know that's the size dumpster you had to have when the fence was put up?
No ma'am.
Okay, so you had to go to a larger dumpster than what you expected?
And they're going through those quicker than, than expected. The original plan approved showed only an eight-yard container, and it was a six-foot structure that was approved, and it was on the opposite side of the property.
And what, as Mr. Tyler asked, was the screening fence put up before the change was made in the dumpster site?
It's, it's still continuing to be addressed by the owners. They're, they're getting a lot more debris with the larger number of sales that they're doing now than they anticipated.
And it has no landscaping around it either?
No ma'am, not around the dumpster enclosure. It abuts the asphalt drive.
Did that answer your question?
You may, so you may have already answered this question just, just earlier. So, is there a possibility to get a four-foot dumpster?
I'm sorry?
A four-foot tall dumpster? Is there a possibility of doing that, instead of your six?
No sir, not in a thirty-yard or a forty-yard. It's not possible to get one four-foot tall.
No, I, I still have a problem with that, because even though you have a dumpster, it sticks a foot above. The possibility of putting another foot of stuff on, on the dumpster, so you're, it's gonna be quite visible, I, I believe. Personally, I'd rather the fence be according to standard worth a foot above the dumpster.
Would you be okay with the two sides if they did that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with the two sides.
As long as they went up tall enough?
As long as they went tall enough.
Every time you throw stuff in the dumpster, it's gonna be taller than the sides.
I agree.
So, twelve, twelve-foot screening?
I feel like that's a good, a good problem to have, but maybe we'll just get it up taller. Be okay with probably, I get the whole logistics of trying to trade out dumpsters, and I think I'd be okay with that, but I think it at least needs to be tall enough to screen it.
Okay, so what they're proposing is an amendment to your variance request to allow it to only be screened on two sides, but the height of it has to be increased one foot above whatever dumpsters. Is that acceptable to you if that variance is approved? Or do you want your existing variance to be voted on?
I'm, I'm certain the owner's probably fine with that. Obviously, the owner's final, final decision in his direction, but I'm, I'm sure he's probably preferable to that than having eight little bitty short dumpsters out there, because that's basically what he would come down to, is having eight instead of two.
Okay, so you're saying, yes, if they make a motion to approve the revised variance request, you're okay?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. So we probably need to take, that would be the revised variance request for the screening, and then the other one is landscaping, if you want to keep all of the rest of it together.
I, I don't have a problem with the landscaping. So yeah, let's just take them all together.
Is everybody good with that? So take the lands, take them all together?
Right.
Revise the screening and then take them all together.
Right. Okay, everybody got that?
Yep.
Okay. And this is a call for the vote.
So, call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
Mr. Cardio? Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch? Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? I'm sorry. Austin?
Yes.
Cardio?
Yes.
Okay.
That passes with one recuse.
Okay, then we need the motion to the revised.
I need a motion, subject to staff comments, for the revised large scale.
Make a motion, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Parker? Second by Mr. Hussein. Compton?
Yes.
Couch? Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardio?
Yes.
Cloud? That passes with one recuse. Next item on the agenda is L twenty-three dash sixteen, Clear Creek Apartments, presented by Engineering Services.
Good evening, Preston Mocker with Engineering Services. This development is a large-scale development for residential multifamily development. It is currently zoned MF twenty-four, and no proposed zoning changes required. The complex will consist of fifteen residential buildings totaling three hundred and twenty-three total units provided. This development also includes numerous amenities, including a clubhouse, a pool, a putting green, outdoor fireplace, outdoor grilling station, pet parks, sport court, child play area, pet spa, car wash, covered parking, private garage parking, and EV charging. So, I, I know it's a lot. We have reviewed the planning commission memo. A lot of it boils down to what we think are four primary comments, one being the pedestrian access to adjoining streets, which we have already revised the plans. We're, we're happy to provide more pedestrian access to this development. The second comment is the common space areas and amenities. Staff just wanted some clarification on how we were getting those calculations, and we have also revised the plans to add additional common space amenities along the eastern portion of the site to, to better serve those residents. Third major comment would be the fencing and screening, just clarifying that we're using the proper materials and providing the proper spacing between stone columns. Also, just the, the materials that are to be used. This is in the overlay district, so the unifying stone elements are encouraged, so just clarifying that those are being provided in the plans. And the fourth major comment was the, the landscaping, and just asking about clarifications on, you know, counts of, counts of landscape providing, and just ensuring that we actually are meeting the, the requirements of the overlay district, which we are. One aspect of the comments, which our architect and city staff have differing, differing views on, is the building facade requirements. The architect has designed the exterior facade per the overlay district requirements regarding building, building material, as well as monument signs. The, the code states that unifying natural stone is required in all amenities, stone fencing columns, as well as monument signs. This section of code stating unifying stone elements may be provided in building design on the facade of the building is where our views slightly differ, as this section of code does not specifically say stone facades are required. We, we've also asked for a few variants from the multifamily design standards, mainly due to the addition to the minor collector that we were required to put through the development, and I'd be happy to discuss any of those variants, if you have any questions of those. All in all, we're excited to bring the, you know, first, first-of-its-kind luxury apartment to Springdale, and I'm open to any comments or questions.
Staff comments?
Well, let me start with, every building that has been built in the overlay district to this point has had stone on it. That was one of the major elements of the southwest overlay district. It has been the city's interpretation since the beginning, that hasn't changed. I can't support the project unless this has stone put on the buildings, and I think anybody who went through the process when we were developing all of those regulations understand that portion of it. Some of the things that we got addressing open space, we didn't get till after two o'clock this afternoon, and staff hasn't had time to look at them. I mean, you can't send it to us on the day of the meeting, expect us to have time to go through and see the calculations. We met several times on this project, and it didn't happen till the day. That just puts the staff in a very bad position. And so, I, I, I have a lot of issues with some of the things. They may be addressing them, they may not be addressing them, but I can't say that if we didn't get the stuff till this afternoon at two. Now, Ron's got several more comments, if you want to go into all those details. There's a lot of details and things that need to be discussed.
Is this in a place for us to look at it?
I think it-
I mean, I'm just asking, there are a lot of comments, and then a lot of things that apparently have been addressed and then not read. Is it a place for us to look at this right now?
You'll have to make that decision. I, I am of the opinion, and we're not ready to, to bring this forward, because it still has so many issues left to be addressed.
I mean, if it's just the, the stone, that's one thing. I see carports maximum length, like, I just, I just don't.
I mean, I'm Brian Moore with Engineering Services. I think if you look at it as a whole, yes, it is ready to, to be seen, and yes, we did get the things in there today, but we got their list two days ago. So, we, we were, we're trying to do that. Ms. Christie, you were out of town for spring break, as well as I was, and, and things like that, but the, the major issue that I'd like, I mean, if we, if we get tabled, that's, that's part of it, I guess, but I would like to address the fact that the overlay district standards say, on the building facade, it may be used. Okay? Ms. Christie is very adamant, and she has been for the last month, that we put stone on the building. The problem is, the ordinance doesn't state that.
Well.
Okay? The ordinance states "may."
I will, I will argue with it, and, and we're not gonna argue with that right now. We've had several meetings, Brian, and you had the list of things that we needed several weeks ago. To address them today at two o'clock is unfair of the fact.
No, 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 we just did that as a, we, we were, we think it's ready even before addressing those.
Okay, then, let's go.
But, but, but the, the, the main issue is that you want stone on the building, and I understand that. I, I, it's fine by me too, but our architect, we gave them the standards, and they met the standards, and in "may" is not "shall."
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna argue that with you today. I ask you to give me the opportunity to discuss it with the architect. I haven't heard from, I haven't heard from the developer. I don't know that we've had a chance to talk about what we're trying to accomplish with this overlay district when it was established. We have set up a standard that we're trying-
I totally get that, but the ordinance says "may." We have to go by what the ordinance says.
I'm not gonna sit here and argue with Brian at the table. Not gonna happen.
Brian, is the architect like opposed to putting stone on any of the buildings?
Yeah, they, they do this all over the south.
Sure.
And they've got, and, and Preston can get up and tell you, they've got stone on the front of the, of the entryways, they've got stone in the fire pits, they've got stone, they've got stone in all of the amenities, which that's what it calls for.
Sure.
And everything. They, they do this, they do this, I mean, this is great. Tell me an apartment complex that has covered parking in Springdale.
We have one in the overlay district that has that. They have detached garages. We have a couple of them.
Tell me, tell me one that has actual garages with carports. I mean, and that's what I'm, I'm saying, we, we meet the code, and, and I understand that people might want stone on a building. I've got stone on mine, but if the ordinance said must have ten percent stone, the architect would put ten percent stone. Does that make sense?
Well, I guess my question was, is he opposed to putting stone on the buildings?
They, this is their model, yes. So, he would like, he would like the ordinance to be red like it is.
Because every, every, to Patsy's point, and whether what the ordinance say or not, every building, all the apartments that have been built that I'm aware of have stone, at least in, from the view of the primary roads, and I think asking for that for a project of this size isn't bad. That's, my only question is, is architect willing to add stone to the buildings? That's the only question I have.
What, what percentage stone?
I don't know, I don't.
There, it specifically didn't say-
I mean, if you look at SAMs, it's probably less than four percent.
Right, I mean, I don't-
I mean, I mean, is it on the corners, three feet high, three?
I mean, you know, the way I look at it, I'd rather have some, because I think, once we let a project go through that doesn't have any stone on the, the building at all, then that just opens up, then we just get further and further away from what the original intent is. I understand what you're saying, what the ordinance says, I get that.
Sure.
I'm, I'm familiar with that, but I think the intent is for every building, every vertical structure to have some stone on it. What the mountain is, I think, is, is vague on purpose, because every design will be a little different, what, how they do it. Even the stone has been different from project to project, but I think, I think asking for stone on, on the building is not, is not a, I think that's a reasonable request, and I get what architects-
And I would tell you, and I would tell you that, that if that's the case, we need to go back to the council and change the ordinance to where, to where that's in, to where, when I give it to-
Where it's easier, I understand that.
You follow what I'm saying?
Completely understand that.
So, and I'm no architect, and don't want to be, just so, just so you know, but, but I mean, you know, if we put five percent on the building-
But having the ability to sit down with the developer and the architect to tell what we're trying to accomplish in this may have taken care of that.
Sure.
Go, go to the elevations. I mean, look at the elevations. There are places that stone could have been added to each one of those buildings that would be minor compared to what, I mean, it's not asking you to redesign the entire building, add some stone to it. It's not a major deal. I, we didn't give the opportunity to talk to the elev, to the architect or the, or the developer to express that, what we were trying to accomplish in Springdale. They may build all over the country, and they do great projects, not, not the point. The point is, we're trying to create a setting in Springdale with stone, and I don't think that's too much to ask for, and that's what we've been doing on everything else. But we can sit here and argue this all night. We're not designing it at the table, nor are we addressing all those issues. Y'all need to decide whether you want to go through all the comments, or what do we want to do with this one?
Yeah, so even aside from that, there are, we've got, there are like ten-plus pages of other comments. Do you want to go through that too?
We can, sure. There, most of them are dual comments. I mean, we have a new reviewer that is, that reviews things totally different than the old reviewers, and now they write down every, every little thing, as opposed to engineering.
I review this as much as everybody, all the rest of them. It's not a totally new reviewer that's done this, because I did this one from the beginning, like I have every other project in the overlay district. It's not, you can't blame this on a new reviewer, that's not the case, no.
Okay.
You have to go up. Could you, could you go up to the mic and state your name?
Sorry. Well, we can't hear you and get you in the record, that's the problem, okay? I mean, we have concerns about the open space being part of that marshy area that's through there. How much is that actually, you know, usable for open space? You gotta, you had a, a trail that goes through there that's not lit. Who's gonna want to walk through that area? I mean, we, we've got lots of issues that still haven't been totally resolved.
Well, yeah, and if you've been to a planning commission meeting, you know, anytime that we get over number, over D with variances, Brian, you know that that starts to get a little, the, the, there's not very many variances.
Well, there's four categories with a lot of them in each category.
Ma'am, could you state your name and address?
Soop Hyatt, and I live across the street from where that's gonna be built, and I thought they were gonna be individual buildings, not big apartments like that. Is that not correct? Twenty-three of them, or?
There are two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, fifteen buildings? And they're all three-story buildings? Right.
And they're all going right there across from our house, in that lot. Oh my gosh.
Total number of units is, how many units is it, guys?
Three hundred and twenty-three.
Three hundred and what?
Three hundred and seventy-two.
Three hundred and seventy-two units is how many?
Well, good luck getting them all out of that place in the morning to go to work. That's all I had, I just wondered. I thought it was gonna be small, like duplexes and stuff.
Well. They have detention ponds designed on the site, and then they have that-
We have all the water, but we can stand them all out here.
Yeah, yeah. I think engineering has addressed the, the drainage issues. I think, other than that marshy area that you're putting more water into it and calling that common area, I think we're, you know, they got a detention pond on the northeast side that takes a large portion of what's coming off the site, and, you know, the drainage, I think, is fairly well taken care of, it's the open space, it's the landscaping, it's the stone.
Okay, so, so, I'm, I'm okay tabling, but, but here's my, here's my question to the commission. I mean, the ordinance is pretty clear that it says "may be used" in a building facade. What, what percentage are y'all saying so I can go back to the architect and to the developer and say, this is what they're thinking? I mean, I, I kind of need some direction, just so I can get with them to, to say, I mean-
Brian, you're asking us to, you're asking the planning commission to design it at the table, they're not going to do that.
No, I'm not, I'm asking a percentage-
Okay, if you want me to say, I'd say half of it.
Of, of any, any, any job that we bring into the overlay district.
Do you want it 50%?
How much?
50%, sure.
50%.
Is, is there any way that-
Sam's has 50%.
You didn't ask me what Sam's had, you asked me to give you a percentage, okay? 50%.
Patsy, you're, 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 you're not, you're not, I, we do a lot of jobs in the overlay district, and what I'm asking is, is so that we know, because, because what you're saying differs-
No.
From the ordinance.
What I told you-
Totally, totally does.
At the times that we have met in my office, we are looking for stone to be something, a part of the structures, that's not just an add-on that looks like we made a, a token effort to get it done. Look around at the other buildings, you can see.
Sam's has less than 5%.
Well, okay, then do less than 5%, but make it, you know, you got one section of wall, put a section of wall, and each one of these buildings that has stone on it. I mean, an architect ought to be able to come up with a good way to handle this, where they do the corners-
The architect looked at the ordinance and said "may" and decided not to do it. That's my, that's my issue.
We're past the "may," we're saying that this body and the city wants stone on the buildings in the overlay district. Is that not clear enough?
I need to know a percentage, Patsy. I mean, it goes against the ordinance of what you're, what you're saying.
You're stating that there's a problem with the ordinance, but has there ever been an issue before this? I don't believe we've ever had an issue.
We, but we've not had a project of this size either.
Well, I, I-
I mean, Chick-fil-A has brick, has, has stone for like two feet up, and that's it.
Look at the apartments across the street from the, the ballpark, this got stone on every building, some buildings it's on the corner, some buildings it's a, it's a wall in between, they didn't have any problem doing it there.
Okay, so you don't want to give me any, so I can tell the architect, a, a percentage of what?
I told you, you didn't like my percentage.
What's that?
Can you not get the architect to-
I can have him call Patsy too, but, but-
Contact the planning department and see, and see if you can work something out between you. I mean, that sounds like a reasonable deal to me, is if both sides can get together beforehand, before they come see us, then get this ironed out, then we wouldn't have a problem. But right now, with all, like, like Mr. Parker said, with all these red lines on our-
Sure.
I don't like to vote on anything when staff says, we don't feel like it's ready for you to vote on.
It's hard, it's hard to vote on that.
No, and, and, and I get that, and, and, and I'm okay tabling.
Right, it's, we don't feel good about this, I don't feel good about it.
I was okay tabling, I'm just asking for direction to talk to the architect.
You didn't like my direction, so do something less than that.
Okay, we'll just go ahead and table, thank you.
So is the consensus to table this?
Well, you're asking for it to be tabled.
I'm asking for it to be tabled, sure.
Okay. Okay, next item, L-23-17 Lamar Northwest Office, presented by Blue and Associates and Domain Architecture.
George DuKane with Blue and Associates, we are doing a, basically a commercial building with, these are, these are the people that do the billboard signs, so they're going to use this facility for staging and kind of getting the signs put up. So, we are asking for a variance, their principal entrance, they would, they're trying to make the building on Interstate 49 look as nice as possible, so we are asking for a variance for that. And I think there's another variance, but I can't remember what the other variance was. But, yeah, basically detention pond, we're trying to work within the exist, existing facilities, I believe, got some elevations, most everything, I believe, should meet all the ordinances that are required. I think it looks like a great project, but, you know, I'll let you guys, let me know, and we'll have questions from there.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, perimeter landscaping is required, and this is just for the north side, foundation landscaping is required, variance has been requested just for the east side, and the entrances, that one customer entrance on all sides of the principal building directly facing an abutting right-of-way, and that variance has been requested.
So basically, you have one entrance that's coming to the south, rather than facing toward 48th Street or 49, right?
Sorry.
Right?
That is correct.
Okay.
In addition to standard engineering comments, sidewalks in the right-of-way should be located one foot inside the right-of-way. We'll just need to look at how that's spaced, and then we need a little bit more information about the streetlights, show the direction of the masked arms, show the size and type of lights based on the location and classification of the street, included note stating if the lights are public or private, and who will be responsible for maintenance and billing. That's it.
George, why is there no perimeter landscaping on the north side of the property?
The north side has a whole bunch of utility easements, and it has that big drainage swale that kind of goes through there. It was starting to be hard to actually incorporate all that, all the landscaping in those areas, especially with utility easements being in the way, there's good chance that they wouldn't, you know, somebody needs to go in there, they're going to remove all the landscaping.
And did you put additional landscaping along the, along the 48th Street and around the building and the areas that you could, to kind of give us more or less the same amount of landscaping that would be required?
Well, I gave direction to my landscape architect to do that, so hopefully he did.
Okay, we're going to calculate and see if that's what happened.
Okay, if not, I'm, we're happy to add whatever else we need to.
Okay, so we get landscaping, just not in those areas where it's going to be in the way of the utilities or any of that kind of stuff, and the access, having, only having one principal access instead of two, I, you know, we have that come up a lot, I don't see that as an issue.
Do we, does the commission have any questions? Can we take these together?
Yep.
Call for the vote? This is a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Cloud? Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardio?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
That passes. Do I have a, a motion, subject to staff comments for the large scale?
Motion to approve the subject.
Motion by Mr. Tyler?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cloud. Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardio?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
That passes. The next item is Heartland Honda, presented by Engineering Services.
Thank you Chair Mueller, Brandon Rush with ESI. This is a almost two-acre site on 48th Street, it's north of 49, we're proposing roughly almost 12,000 square foot building. We also have the owner here, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
So in addition to standard comments, minimum distance between driveways on adjoining properties is 50 feet, and 150 feet on a single tract, a variance has been requested. Entrances, one customer entrance is required on all sides of the principal building directly facing an abutting public right-of-way, variance has been requested. Roof change in every 100 linear feet is required, variance has been requested. Parking lot orientation, no more than 60% of the off-street parking area for the entire property can be located between the front facade within the building front yard and the principal building in the right-of-way, variance has been requested. Where a facade faces adjacent residential uses, or an area on the comprehensive land use plan designated for residential uses, North and Birm shall be installed, a variance has been requested, and foundation, foundation landscaping is required, which a variance has been requested. For engineering, I'm looking for a little bit more information about the underground drainage system, submit details and specifications for the underground stormwater system, what is the restriction for that system, is there a wear plate in the drop inlet, I would just like some more detail on that, and then also, please install wheel stops for all parking stalls that are adjacent to a sidewalk with a width of five foot.
Does the commission have any questions?
I got a couple of questions before you get to that.
Okay.
You're asking for reduction of parking spaces from 46 to 37, so are those, Phase Two gets you to 37, to 37 spaces?
Yes, ma'am.
So when will the second phase be done so that we have more than a, because 13 of those spaces are on Phase Two?
The, the idea is to do it all together, Phase Two is mostly just in case budget comes up, that it needs to be postponed.
Okay, but that still raises a question, if you don't build Phase Two, then your variance for parking spaces is even more. It's 13 more, because on Phase One, you, you don't have 37 spaces. Correct?
Right, I mean, we're definitely trying to, to build it all.
Okay, so if, what I'm saying is, if you get down to, and Phase Two is not built, you can't get a C of O unless you come back and get another parking variance, because you only have half, less than half of the parking spaces on the lot that's Phase One. Just so y'all understand that.
Yeah.
Because if the variance is approved from 46 to 37, that means all of that has to be done to get your C of O. Okay?
We understand.
Everybody got that? Because when we tell you, no, you can't get it, I want you to remember, this is what we told you here, okay? Okay?
Sure you don't ask for 24.
And I guess it's coming down to that, do you want to ask?
I mean-
Yeah.
Because some of us don't care about parking, because I think required parking is about the dumbest thing cities ever did, but you do, but, but what she's saying, you won't have this building unless those 37 parking spaces are, are done.
Well, we were, we were trying to minimize our ask, but, with, yes, so for this use, the owner thinks that this is plenty of parking for their use, so we-
The 37 or the 24?
The 24.
Okay. So you don't ask for that variance?
Yes. We can change it to 24.
Such hesitation. So your request is from 46 to 24. Okay?
Yes.
And then the bonus will be when you do Phase Two, you, but if we give you this, will you ever do Phase Two?
Quite likely.
Quite likely? Okay. That's the question y'all have to decide, can we reduce it to, now, the spaces that are counted on Phase One are the ones that's adjacent to the building, the other spaces are being used for open display, so you're going to have boats parked in each one of those. So how many actual using, usable spaces do you have on Phase One for just cars, or people coming in?
We have the, that area marked as parking and open display, so the intent is, if their parking becomes a problem, the amount of boats stored can be reduced, if parking's not a problem, they can use that area for open display. And if the property changes hands and becomes a more parking-intensive use, parking is there.
Okay. What we are trying to avoid is you can't park the boats on the grass, and you can't park vehicles on the grass. Okay?
Right, and we think this is a better solution than that.
Okay. So we're reducing that to, from 46 to 24? You're redo, you're revising your variance request?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Commission have any other questions? Do we want to take these together?
Sure.
Okay, this is a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Dr. Compton? Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardio?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
That passes. Do I have a motion for the large scale? Subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve the subject.
Motion by Mr. Tyler?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Cloud?
Sounds like we have a comment here. We have somebody in the audience, oh, okay.
Katie, my name is Mike Bohannon, I live next door to Phase Two, and they built the storage world next door to where Honda's going to do this, and I complained several times, and had this lady out several times about getting flooded out, all that water comes right down to my garage. And I want to know how, how they're going to do the land, the lay of the land to keep me from getting flooded out. I have pictures of my field and the pond north of me, nothing but red, red mud. And I, those three, those two trailer houses and the garage that come down Moon Lane, on the plats, it says it's a future-use road for the city. Well, that future route, road for the city is on my abstract, so I own that road. I want to know how far back they're going to come to my driveway.
Katie, do you have, can you address the drainage issues? Yeah, Brandon should address it too. You're doing under parking lot detention, right?
Right, so this one has underground detention that will discharge at the northwest corner of the property into that, yes, and at, to the existing load point.
So my garage is going to be flooded again?
So they are not allowed to increase the peak flow of water off of the property, so that's why they have those, those chambers underneath the parking lot that will, that will hold it back, and then release it at the same rate as if it were undeveloped.
What happens if my, my garage gets flooded?
I don't know if I can speak to that.
Brandon, you want to address the drainage calculations of what you're doing?
We can just shoot you to buy me out. Life was like it would, we have an discussion, and they want to make that. It's not, it's not-
The, Katie explained it well, but we do have a underground drainage system that's, that's designed to reduce the peak flows from the existing conditions, so the water will be stored in 36-inch pipes underneath the driveway, so it shouldn't be increased from what it is today. Yeah, there's a level spreader on the discharge, so there won't be water just shooting out at high velocity onto your property, it, it'll be spread out and sheet flowing.
It's already, it's running out from the storage room, comes right down through there.
Maybe you can speak to like what happens during the construction phase, because I, we, we get that it'll happen once the project's done and all that, but how do you mitigate the runoff during the construction part?
Right, I mean, we'll have, you know, silt fence and things like that to control runoff during construction, so there shouldn't be-
That's what they said over in the storage room, that never happened, still hasn't happened.
I'm not familiar with that project, but ours, ours will have that.
We're familiar with the standards, we'll make sure everything is per, you know, what they approve of the city, and I guarantee it will be maintained, maintained better than any other, I don't know. It's going through the-
You need to come say that on the record, so we know who that is that said that.
I'll just defer, I'm sorry.
Okay, so it was the background, it wasn't a commitment made to the record, okay?
So if there is more water runoff after construction, who does he call? The property owner? The property owner.
Well, I mean, they usually call the city engineers office. Then you want to?
Granted, when they built my garage, it probably built sixty years ago. And they just put slabs down, which is stupid. But I have no control over that now.
Yeah, so i- if it gets flooded in the future, contact city engineering. We'll review what's happened and make sure that the system is functioning the way it was originally designed. If there's an error in design, we'll notify ESI that we found something and let them take a look at what's going on and see if there's anything else that needs to happen. The, the situation is, this is one of those, it sounds like, where their development is required to not make things any worse, but they're also not required to make things better. So if you've been flooded, it will probably continue to happen, but it won't be increased flooding because of the development.
Do we have any more questions? I think we were voting on the large scale.
Yeah, the motion to approve subject to staff comments, yeah.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardielle?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller? Yes. That passes.
Thank you.
Next item is L twenty-three dash twenty-five Lou Thompson and Son Trucking presented by Bateson Associates.
Good evening, my name is Jake Chavis with Bateson Associates. Just want to point out, we don't have any variances or waivers with, with this one. We're just proposing a small parking lot for overflow, overflow parking for, uh, Lou Thompson's existing business. We're meeting all the requirements, like I said, no, no waivers, no variances. Um, I'm, I'm here for any question that you may have.
Staff comments?
Um, there appear to be some pages missing from the drainage report, so we just need a complete, complete copy of that, but everything else looked all right. Um, we had some duplicate notes, I think they were shown on multiple pages, so just some small corrections there. And then please note that a modified curb is required at the drives. I think it's already there though, because I think we have a commercial drive in place currently. Okay. Thanks.
Planning has nothing but standard comments.
Okay, you got a future building on here, knowing that if you want to build a building, you're going to have to come back through the process.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The other thing you need to note is this is not zoned for parking of live haul trucks at this location because that is an industrial use and this is not an industrial piece of property.
Okay.
Okay, I, I have been told by the neighbors that it's had live haul trucks parked on there?
I'm not aware of, I'm not aware of that, if it has or not.
You need to make sure your property owner understands live haul trucks are not to be parked at this location.
Okay. No, I'll let them know.
Okay.
This is a motion subject to staff comments.
Make a motion subject to staff comments?
Motion by Mr. Parker. Have a sec. Second by Mr. Austin. Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardielle?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller? Yes. Parker?
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you.
Next item is L twenty-three dash twenty-seven UAMS Health Orthopedic and Sports Medicine Center presented by Engineering Services.
Thank you, Chairman Mueller, Brandon Rush with the ESI again. This is a very exciting facility, um, be an important addition to the Springdale Care Corridor. Uh, we have Marlin Blackwell Architects. They're here to kind of discuss the design intent of this project. And then there's also leadership from UAMS here to discuss the project if you have any questions.
Thank you. Justin Hersberger with Marlin Blackwell Architects. The UAMS, um, Orthopedic Sports Medicine Center, first of all, I'd like to say it's going to be, well, it's a high-quality design building, has lasting materials, it does have stone. And we really think this is going to be an iconic facility, not only for UAMS, but for Northwest Arkansas. The site plan consists of the building set kind of back from the Watkins Avenue to the north. There's a large meadow, um, between Watkins and the building, which consists of some prairie grasses. You can see some precedence for that on the side. This is also going to be what we hope will be the, the first lead for healthcare facility in North, uh, well, in Arkansas, actually. Underneath that meadow is a geothermal field, um, that will be helping with the energy efficiency of the building and supporting that measure for lead approval. To the, to the northwest of the property, we are improving the pond that's, that's existing, um, on the site that, uh, receives some drainage from our neighbors to the north. Um, you enter the, the site kind of rolling down the meadow, um, rolling down, uh, to the south side of the building, where the primary entrances, so we are, we are asking for an accommodation there. Because of the way the pottery falls, there's kind of a half level underneath, um, and a full level up above. You can see that on the east and the west elevations, which are on the bottom and then second from the top. So within the facility, we're going to have clinic space, um, space for, um, physical therapy, sports medicine, as well as the surgical center, for a wide variety of, um, orthopedics. We are also asking, um, for some accommodations along Watkins Avenue. One, primarily because the city currently has planned, uh, to provide a sidewalk, um, along Watkins as part of a separate project, so we're working with the city engineers to accommodate our curb cuts, uh, make sure that those can be properly designed and cohesive with the current, with, uh, the intent for the trail system that's extending along Watkins. For Mary Frances Drive to the east, we're, um, building the full width of Mary Watkins Drive, uh, for two-thirds of the length of the property. One of the accommodations we're asking for is to just put the sidewalk on the east side to the property line there. The, on the west side of Mary, uh, Frances Drive is our loading area. So we were trying to limit folks coming from that side. Also working to tie it into, uh, what Mary Frances looks like on the north side of the property there, um, which is currently sidewalkless. The parking lot, I know, um, it looks a little non-traditional, but just the way the slope is, um, working its way down the, the site, it's a series of trays, basically, a part, kind of parking trays is what we're referring to them as. Rather than one contiguous sheet of asphalt with polka dots of landscape inside of that, we have these long bars of landscape, about fourteen feet wide, that accommodate, um, over three times the amount of required landscape and over two times the amount of required tree coverage, um, for the parking lot. Happy to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, uh, we have handicap ramps shall be provided wherever sidewalk crosses occur back crosswalks, driveways and street intersections. Uh, will there be stamped concrete to display the internal crosswalks? Frontage landscaping is required in accordance with chapter fifty-six for which a variance has been requested. Perimeter landscaping is required in accordance with chapter fifty-six for which a variance has been requested. Landscape islands are required at a rate of one per fifteen parking spaces in accordance with chapter fifty-six for which a, uh, variance has been requested. Applicant is required to provide street improvements for public right of way and a waiver has been requested for both Mary Frances Drive as well as Watkins Avenue. All sides of a principal building that directly faces an abutting public right of way shall feature at least one customer entrance unless the principal building directly faces more than two abutting rights of way. Then only two entrances are required, only along the primary street and one along, uh, secondary street for which a variance has been requested. Continuous internal pedestrian walkways no less than five feet in width form the public sidewalk to the principal customer entrance of all principal buildings on the site are required for which a variance has been requested. A five-foot wide sidewalk along the full length of the building along any side that features a customer entrance is required. The sidewalk shall be set back from the building foundation at least six feet to provide areas of, uh, for foundation landscaping for which a variance has been requested. Foundation landscaping is required, variance has been requested. Central features and community spaces shall have direct access to the public sidewalk for which a variance has been requested. Rooflines shall be varied with a change in height every one hundred linear feet in building length for which a variance has been requested. Entryway landscaping is required per Springdale Commercial Design Standard, uh, variance has been requested. Site layout, non-residential, a site of principal, or a side of a principal building that directly faces an abutting right of way should be upgraded to include the design requirements of this article. A customer entrance is encouraged, but not required to be provided. Where a principal building directly faces more than two abutting public rights of way, this requirement to, or shall apply to only two sides of the building, including the side of the building facing the primary street and another of the building facing the secondary street for which a variance has been requested. Pertaining to pedestrian connectivity, sidewalks at least five feet in width shall be provided along the sides of the lot that have a but, a but, a public right of way excluding interstate highways or alleys. At least one internal pedestrian walkway or designated area no less than five feet in width clear of obstruction, including vehicular overhangs shall be provided from a public sidewalk or right of way to the principal customer entrance of all principal buildings on the site. At a minimum, walkways shall connect focal points of pedestrian activity such as, but not limited to, transit stops, street crossings and building and store entry points. Sidewalks no less than five feet in width shall be provided along the major length of the building, along any facade featuring a customer entrance and along any facade abutting public parking areas. If the sidewalk is part of the trail system, it must meet all city trail regu- regulations, including but not limited to the city's minimum requirements for which a variance has been requested. Maintenance, uh, description of maintenance provisions and maintenance schedule shall be submitted with the landscape plan, maintenance guarantee statement. A note shall be added to the landscape plan that states once installed landscaping shall be maintained in a healthy living condition and all plant material that dies shall be replaced. Uh, materials in the public right of way, any materials used in public right of way must be low maintenance and water-saving, uh, natively adapted plantings, uh, for which, planning staff will work with applicant to determine a layout for native grasses that will best meet the intent of the Southwest Overlay Standard. And, uh, roofs, roofline or parapet lines shall be varied with a change in height of a minimum of two feet every one hundred linear feet in length of the building. Parapets, gable roofs, high roofs or dormers shall be used to conceal flat roofs and rooftop equipment from public view. Alternating lengths and designs may be acceptable and can be addressed during the development plan. Any flat roofs shall be energy efficient and meet Energy Star rating or similar for which a variance has been requested.
Engineering comments? Retention ponds, she'll have an approved maintenance plan, please submit the maintenance plan. And I did have a question whether the existing pond that's kind of being rehabbed will be considered a retention pond and whether any, um, aerators or maintenance plans would be proposed for that. For Mary Frances Lane, five-foot sidewalks are required on both sides of the road for which a waiver has been requested. And please submit a geotech report to support the chosen street section. And the rest are standard comments.
Okay, lots of comments, let's kind of summarize where we are. Okay, let's go to the landscaping plan. You're doing additional landscaping on the west side of the property line because there are some residential structures there right now. Okay, so we have additional landscaping along that side. Why is there not any landscaping along Jean George Boulevard when you get to the property that actually fronts onto Jean George? Why no landscaping there?
We're, we're not improving that area.
Well, it's still part of your site.
There's a, um, existing tree there and then I guess we're, we're tied in with some utility connections there. If we need to provide some additional, um, you know, tree coverage there, we, we can certainly do so.
Okay, let's, let's talk about that one, okay? You have landscaping on the south side and that is existing or that's all to be new?
There's one or two elements there that are existing, but, um, all that's showing on this plan is, is new.
Okay, you will show us which ones are existing and how you're going to preserve them.
Believe that's on this whole.
Okay. Just, just to make sure that's covered.
Yeah, there's, there's one monument tree.
You don't have a, a sidewalk from Wat- from Watkins Avenue down to the entrance along the drive. You have something that's shown on this plant, are those shrubs or something along?
Yeah, the, the kind of stippling along the edge, um, this is one of the things I forgot to mention, I guess. We're planning to do like kind of a buffer of, um, of sod along this, all the street edges, so, um, Watkins to the north and then the entry drive. So the prairie grass starts about six feet back from the edge of that, of those drives.
Is there a reason why you can't have at least one sidewalk from the entrance up to Watkins? Because that's what we have, I mean, that's one of the requirements in the overlay district and in the commercial design standards to have that access to the public street.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's an accommodation we can make within the current design, um, between receiving those comments and today we have spoken with landscape architects. We don't, it's not going to affect grading to be able to do that, so I think.
So well, at least on one side of that drive going in there will there be a sidewalk, so that variance goes away. Okay. Now, in each of the parking lot rows of parking, you have additional trees that would exceed what would be required for one island for every fifteen spaces?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct, okay. And it serves as some kind of a drainage?
They're, they're, they collect, yeah, they collect water as it kind of steps down, um, down the grade, the existing grade.
Okay, now you have all your mechanical facilities and stuff in the back.
Yes, ma'am.
And your lighting dock and all that screened with a wall.
Yes, ma'am.
And it has landscaping around that. And that's also another access for the public to come, or not necessarily the public, but for some clients to come in the back door that way?
The intent is some, some may come in the back, but primarily the doctors and staff coming in from the east side of the building.
Okay, but there is that access off of there. And why is there a side, not a sidewalk on both sides of the public street? Because you are building a public street down through there.
Yes, ma'am. So specifically on the east side, it is going to a very private part of the building, so we're just hoping to limit some of the connectivity. We also noticed, just as we were looking on the immediate condition, there's no sidewalk on Mary Frances to the north, so just kind of mirroring that. If we, if, if it's a point of contention and we absolutely have to, we can have further discussion with the client, see if, um, see if they can make accommodations from the operational side.
Because that is a collector's street about the sidewalks on that. Okay, so that's something that needs to be worked out with the waiver because council has to approve the waiver of the street being built in this manner, both sides all the way down to the south end of, of your drive, and they would have to be the one that concurs in taking the sidewalk out.
Yes, ma'am, that, that's why we submitted the waiver, for sure.
Okay. Now, the roof design, the building design itself, it's the north side that faces Watkins that doesn't have any break in the roof line, correct?
Yep.
And the east side that's to the public street doesn't have any breaks?
It, it has a break, that's the middle one, there is a break, or there's a section that's longer than a hundred feet, um, to the north. So the intent is just to develop a more of a low slung building, um, that you, you circulate around, kind of more of a mat building.
With three little fins on it?
Series of.
That provide natural light to the interior.
Yes, ma'am, those, that's what's, you, you were seeing there, the pop-ups and roof monitors, um, they have glass on one face so that it brings light in within the building.
And what you didn't talk about is that the facility itself has some interior courts that will have landscaping inside.
It does, yes, there's the, um, I gue- I guess you can see it there.
Kind of hard to see on that, yeah.
Yeah, there, there's two large courtyards. So what's kind of cool about is the, the staff, um, it's kind of this onstage, offstage concept of Disney model, if you, if you may, where patients, um, walk through the middle, through the courtyards, um, while staff and the doctors and everything kind of rotate around the side, so the staff have access, or sorry, the patients have access to these, um, courtyards within the middle of the building as they're, you know.
And the foundation landscaping, there's additional landscaping on the side that actually provides enough landscaping, it's just not along the edge of the building?
Yes, ma'am.
Even on the north side?
We do have the meadow that comes up close to the building, we have a gravel strip between the building and that meadow, which.
Okay, and we need to work with you on the type of material that needs to be used there. Tall grass, the snot mode can create an issue. We need to sit down and talk about what kind of material can be used in that meadow.
Sure thing.
Okay. Did I miss anything? The sidewalks were the issue and I think we can work out the sidewalk issues and add those to the plan so that variance goes away.
Great.
Okay.
I have a question or two.
Sure.
Is there any? So it appears that most of your stone is at the entrance.
It is, it's at the, the lower level entrance.
Do you have any stone feature on the north side, either a monument sign or?
We'll have the, we'll have the overlay district monument sign that utilizes the same, uh, stone at the base.
Off of Watkins?
Yes, sir.
And then, go ahead.
But when you come into the structure itself, you see the stone when you come into it.
Yeah, I need to.
As you approach from below.
And so you're asking for a waiver not to improve Watkins?
Yes, sir, because it's the.
It's a bond program, or it's a, it's a bond program project.
It's already been designed, funds are already allocated, we're building it for them.
Perfect.
So we are, the, the current design by the city does not have the curb cuts and everything, so we are working with them, you know, giving them our grading plan and, and curb cut plan so that it can be accommodated.
And then I hear you say you're going to, and I think Pat and you were talking through this really fast, but, uh, are you adding a sidewalk down? Would it be the western entrance?
I don't know if you guys can use the point.
Yes, the western entrance down to where they come into the parking lot.
That'll feed down into the entrance?
Yeah. It would come down the east side of the drive here.
We can't see that. They can't see that on here. But yes, we, we will get that worked out because we talked about that.
I didn't know, I didn't, I couldn't tell if you said eastern or western entrance.
East side of the entry drive.
East side of the western drive, got it.
He's, there you go.
I knew what he was talking about because we'd already talked about it once before, we knew how we were going to get that one in there. Yeah, I know.
That's a better question too. All that parking that's in the rear on the east side of the building, is that primarily staff parking?
Primarily, yes, sir.
Okay. Would it also be public parking as well?
Certain patients might be able to utilize that, there, there is a staff entrance, um, on that east side of the building, which is why.
It's predominantly staff parking.
Sure.
Does this get standard university faculty through certain hours like you see all over campus? Does it get one of those signs?
That's above my pay.
We got to meet the sign ordinance in this one too, so y'all keep that in mind where we put up those standard signs, okay? We have to have a sign package for this too, so.
We'll, we'll work in the Razorback, Pat, Patzy.
I asked him where the hog was going to be on the building and nobody will tell me where it's going to be on there.
We're working on it.
Yeah.
Any more questions? Any questions from the audience? Can we take these all together?
Well, not all of, not the waivers. Yeah, we can do all of those because I think we've talked about everything that's in here, they're adding the sidewalks.
Yes, but not the waivers.
Yeah, take the pedestrian flow sidewalks out because they're going to, we're going to add those on there, which is B. So you got the, and C, which is the direct access to central features in the community spaces. So we got the roof, the landscaping, but we have landscaping equal to what would be required on the side itself? And the entrance with only one customer entrance?
Yeah, I will note as soon as you do B, it takes care of C. So, because doing that sidewalk would provide
Right.
access to the central facilities and...
Do you have some bike racks on this?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought you did.
This is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Tyler. Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
That passes.
Now, the waivers are recommendations to the council because the council is the only one that actually can do waivers of street improvements. So if the planning commission wants to recommend approval of the waivers as submitted on here with the sidewalks added or whatever you want to do with it, it actually goes to council. Yeah.
Let's take a vote. I'll make a motion to forward to council with recommendation to approve.
Motion by Mr. Parker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cloud. Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Passes for the recommendation. Now, do I have a motion for the large scale? Subject to staff comments. Motion by Mr. Parker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tyler. Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
That passes.
Great, thank you. I know UMS is excited to be coming to Springdale, so thank you.
Next item is L-23-28 Manhattan Road and Bridge, presented by Blue &amp; Associates and Jason Teague.
George DeCame with Blue &amp; Associates, this is a pretty simple project. Manhattan Road and Bridge currently owns the property to the south of this piece and they are looking to expand their gravel parking lot. They have previously gotten a variance for the gravel parking lot, this is just an extension to that. As a part of this, we are asking for variances for road improvements along Jefferson Street, a waiver of road improvements along Jefferson Street, and we are asking for a variance for the landscaping along the north side and along the south side, so basically all the sides and Jefferson Street, but we are willing to put it along Randall Woolby. The reason being that most of those properties are industrial in nature and screening between two industrial-type properties just didn't seem necessary. But if you have any questions, we are available and I do have a representative from Manhattan Road and Bridge available as well.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, all drives and parking areas are required to be paved for which variance B-2275 was approved by planning commission. Screening fences required in accordance with Chapter 56, show trees associated with screen variance requested. Perimeter landscaping required according to Chapter 56, variance has been requested. And street improvements are required along Jefferson Street for which a waiver was requested.
I think Rick covered all of mine because I also have, yeah, street improvements are required on Jefferson for which waiver has been requested, and then standard comments.
Do we have any comments from the audience? Commission, have any comments?
Can somebody speak towards the waiver on the trickle channel, what's that about?
That's an engineering...
Yeah, it's something we're going to work out, just between the consultant and us, it's not something that the Board of Adjustments typically votes on, but in this case, they are asking to forego the trickle channel because there's not a point, there's not a pipe coming into the pond. Everything should sheet flow into it, so we're going to work on that and make sure the slope of the pond is enough that it still drains properly without that channel. And staff doesn't have a problem with that.
Would the applicant be willing to do payment in lieu of improvements for the street?
I'll let Jason Teague speak to that, I don't, we didn't discuss it before we came to the meeting, so.
Jason Teague, Manhattan Road and Bridge, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Can you do payment in lieu of improvements for that portion of the street? Oh, no, this is 265 that's already been improved?
That's correct.
Okay, never mind. Jefferson Street is the one that can we get payment in lieu of improvements for Jefferson Street?
Could you tell me maybe what that looks like, I'm just curious, I don't really...
Well, you'll have to give us an estimate of what it would be based on, and engineering would have to look at it. You can, we can discuss that by the time it gets to council.
Okay.
Because council will have to make the final decision whether they want payment in lieu of improvements or whether they would waive it itself, so.
We handle the waiver separately. Okay, the variance for commercial design standards and landscaping, we can take those together?
Yep.
That's a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Dr. Compton. Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
That passes. And the waivers are recommendations?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to recommend that the waiver for street improvements would be payment in lieu of, and then take, and then recommend the waiver on the trickle channel, as stated earlier by Ms. Kate.
Okay, we're just, we're taking the waiver off, you don't have to take, you don't have to take any action on that.
Let's not take any action on that one.
You don't have to take any action on that one, but if your, if your recommendation or your motion is to recommend payment in lieu of improvements for the street improvements.
Correct.
Okay, so that was Mr. Cloud's motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Compton. Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
That recommendation passes.
Then I'll go to council on the 25th.
Okay, thank you.
Now we need the motion on the...
Motion for the large scale. Subject to staff comments. Motion by Mr. Tyler. Second by Mr. Hussein. Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes. I gotta take a bathroom break, but that passes. Okay, we need to see whether that rezoning we tabled...
Oh, yes. Do you want, take like a short recess, we're going to take a short recess. That was, what was the one that we... We still missing... I'm going to go back to the tabled, or the item that we skipped over. R-23-15 Gonzalez Family Revocable Trust, presented by Alberto Gonzalez.
Hi, my name is Alberto Gonzalez.
You're wanting to rezone from O1 to C2?
Yes.
Staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates neighborhood commercial use for the area the rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. It's recommended for approval encourages development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood community and regional centers.
Do we have any comments from the audience? If you could come to the mic, state your name and address.
My name is Mike Lowman. I live at 803 Betty Street. My backyard is directly on the property line with this lot. And I've been there about 11, almost 12 years, and I'm not sure how long the person's owned this, but it wasn't, I don't believe it was considered commercial or anybody thought about doing commercial when we bought the house, so we were fine with it being whatever O1 is, but we've got a seven-year-old autistic daughter. When the Family Dollar closed down and they opened that 24-hour gym, we get lights in our windows all the time, noise all the time, and that's two lots away. So if this is turned into a commercial property and it's right there, it's just going to be much worse being right on the property line. In last year, we had to deal with the fireworks stand 100 feet from our, from our house that was rented there. I mean, there's just been all kinds of issues, and if it goes to commercial property, who knows what could be there, a repair shop or a restaurant or fast food restaurant or whatever, and it, I just really don't want to see it there. We have enough drainage problems with our property also, without construction having been done there. But that's about all I have to say, I appreciate it, thank you.
You said you're having problems with light from the...
My name is June Kirby.
Okay, just a second, let me ask a question about the lights. Have they changed the lights out from what was there when it was Family Dollar?
They, there's always been kind of a spotlight, but now, all night long, because it's a 24-hour gym, the cars pull into the parking lot, and so the lights are straight across the field, and also they sit out there at night and do CrossFit in the middle of the night, at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning with music playing and lights on. I think that's what they're doing because I see people in the parking lot all night long, so.
I was going to say the side lights and the building lights shouldn't have changed from one commercial use to the other, but it's the use that's causing the different problem for you, okay? Okay.
Thank you.
I'm June Kirby and I live at 801 Betty. And I don't want this there, I've lived there for 42 years, and I don't like all the noise and stuff that's going on right now. And like you said, we have a bad drainage problem on our property. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
James Moore, and I live at 807 Betty Street. And I would not like to see this property go commercial because of the noise that would be there at the time. Right now, has been stated, there's a lot of noise from the Elm Street Gym. There's lights from the cars that are shining, not only in my windows, it's also Jerry's. If this goes commercial, it's just going to get worse than what is going on right now. I've, to make a point, I've had to call the police several times because of noise issues. Music has been played real loud, among other things. Thank you.
I'm Jerry Cook, thank you for listening to us speak tonight. I live at 805 Betty Street. Back in August of 2002, I sent a letter to Mr. Jeff Harper. I've been there 26 years, and I was going to be out of town, I sent it to the planning commission. We had Eagles concerts in Little Rock, so I wrote a nice letter up. It got passed by the planning commission. I went and I worked with our mayor, and I took it to city council because they were approving it to go to commercial. After talking to the city council at the time, they said, you know what, they make buffer zones from... They make buffer zones from commercial to residential where we don't have commercial on our back doorsteps. And they made it oh one. When Mr. Alberto, I mean, we talked, when he purchased this property, he knew what he was purchasing at the time. It was oh one. We've had to deal with other problems. I'm not gonna get into all those tonight. But as I talked about, the lights, we deal with our lights. I don't even have to turn my lights on in my house, or I have a nightlight. I can see go anywhere in my house at nighttime. If it's not just the lights off the building, it's the gym and the cars all night long at the gym shining in our backyards. I really don't want it to go commercial. The Moore's next door, his wife worked, she's got some medical problems. She was one of our librarians here in town. I'm a veteran. I serve our company, I serve our city every day in what I do. Mike's a veteran. I think your, is your wife a veteran too? Okay, so I'm a veteran, he's a veteran. We've given our time to our country. We do not want commercial property on our back doorstep. We wanna just live peacefully. I mean, we've got people, I've been here twenty, twenty-six years, and there's two people that's lived there longer than I have. We don't want it. Nothing personal to him. It's not just to make money and move on to the next job. We don't want it on our doorstep. Thank you.
Sir, when did you say you brought that for council?
August of two thousand and two, I believe is what it was when I called the planning today. Okay, the other mayor, sorry. Sorry, Doug. Okay. I brought it before. I'm putting more age on him. No, anyway, I took it to city council. Kathy Jaycox at the time listened to me. Thank God that they listened to me and got it turned down from commercial at that time. But the other problem I do also see after talking to the planning commission or planning department today at the city of Springdale is we've already fought this fight. It was oh one, it was made oh one. And they said that they can bring this stuff up every year. That's a, to me, that's a nuisance. You shouldn't have to come out. I mean, I used to have to deal with AT&amp;T U-verse every year. That was a nuisance. I got rid of them. It's a nuisance if you have to come up here because they can bring it before the board every year. I mean, if it's already been set, that's where it needs to be.
Okay, let me, let me kinda go over the difference. An oh-one zone, which is a neighborhood office district, technically is a commercial zone. What it allows is single-family dwellings, townhomes, duplexes, office studios and related services, home occupation, home office or a health clinic, healthcare clinic, has permitted uses in an oh-one zone with the stipulation that anything that is built in close proximity to apartments or other residential uses is limited to a maximum structure size of five thousand square feet, and it has to be compatible or desirable characteristics with the neighborhood. A C-two zone that they are asking for it to be rezoned, the permitted uses in a C-two zone includes cultural recreational and health facilities, office studios and related services, eating places, but they can't have a drive-through lane, neighborhood shopping goods, other shopping goods, trades and services, automotive services, parking lot, temporary buildings, transportation services, healthcare clinic, and a flea market indoor. The only other difference between what was discussed when it was done several years ago is we have designed, we have screening requirements that would require them to screen on that side and put up screening walls and landscaping to cut down on those lights shining into those backyards, which didn't exist when all this was built originally. So that's the only other difference that we have now.
Eight-foot-tall screening, right? Because it's commercial to residential.
Right, because, and it has to be, you know, opaque, and it has to have trees that have, at their maturity, the twenty-foot screening at the top of it. That's the other difference that we have between now and what was done back then. Because we didn't have that screening requirement back then.
Are there any hours operation restrictions on C-two? Or is twenty-four, is that normal?
If it was a conditional use in the C-two, it could be, but otherwise, no.
Okay.
There's no requirements for that. You know, I think it could be considered to be a nuisance if it's causing lights in the back, and they might have to do some screening. That would be something we'd have to look at.
That was gonna be my only comment is that what you've described sounds like we may have a design problem with that property being there, having been there for so long and maybe predating some of the new screening. Obviously, lighting is a big thing. We just dealt with this on another project last month where lights kind of, you know, going over into someone's yard and that kind of thing. But, and I appreciate you guys coming, and I understand where you're coming from. I live near Huntsville, so I get it. But, you know, that gets twenty to thirty thousand cars a day. It's gonna be commercial, unfortunately, you know, for you, that's where you live, but it's not gonna stay...
Oh one is considered commercial, so there's not a problem with leaving it at oh one.
Oh one, though, we usually have in, not on our, you know, major streets like that. Oh one is kind of, it is used as a buffer. And probably twenty-seven years ago, I could see why they would vote that way and give you that buffer. But where we're at today, it's just, it, the highest and best use of that piece of property is gonna be, is gonna be C-two. And that's, you know, as a property owner, they, you know, they have the right to do that.
It's funny because he purchased the property, he knew what it was already zoned for.
But if you, you see that mountain's up there?
Mm-hmm.
See all that C-two?
Mm-hmm.
That's the...
Why does the city have buffer zones if you're not gonna use them?
Well, I mean, it could, I mean, again, C-two is not our only commercial zone. There could be heavier commercial uses that we're not, we're not allowing there.
Okay, and if you go onto your website, you show buffer zones, but you don't show them on any of your mapping either. There's a color there.
What's the question?
It's not a question, it's a comment. If you go on your all's webpage on Springdale and you look up the planning for the future, there's no buffer zones. There's a, there's a color code for it, but you don't see that color anywhere on your mapping. You can pull it up tomorrow and look at it, or tonight when you get home, you'll see exactly what I'm saying.
And as far as the, they cannot reapply. If the rezoning request is denied, the ordinance allows them to come back, not for, it has to be at least a year before they can come back and ask for the same zoning classification.
Right.
And that's the way the ordinance is written.
Right. I'm just saying, y'all don't want commercial property on your back doorstep neither nor do we. That's what I'm saying.
Personally, I think oh one in this particular location is a reasonable commercial zone. I think that the fact that all for you, all the neighbors showed up and expressed your concerns, to me, I think it, it means to me, so appreciate you guys coming out.
Just one more thing. I mean, with all the residential that's around it, I don't see what the problem would be keeping it oh one so that, I mean, if a duplex was built there or, that wouldn't bother me, but I don't wanna have a tire shop there or a coffee shop or, you know, well, you can't have a drive-through, but...
Unregulated.
But, you know, twenty-four-hour anything, we're already dealing with a twenty-four-hour gym that is a nuisance. And to have it right on our property line, always there, because this is a possibility, it could happen. I don't want it. I, I just, it's not gonna be good for my family, my neighbors, and that's mine. Thank you. I just, I have a problem with, and I understand where y'all are coming from. I mean, I was, I'm in the same situation. There was a, there's apartments. It's zoned to be apartments right behind my house. Do I like that? Maybe not. But do I respect a property's owner's right to rezone within, within the guidelines, is what Springdale puts out there? I respect his rights, and those, those apartments, if he puts them in, will be there. I just have a problem with, just because it's behind your house, it is not your property, in my opinion. It's the owner's property. And that's, that's just my opinion.
If it changes our way of life, then it affects us personally.
Well, so will a bunch of apartments behind my house.
Well, I'm just saying, the city's gonna have to deal with it on that side if they choose to make that C-two. I mean, if there's phone calls every day, if it's calling the police, calling the mayor's office, the city's gonna have to deal with it.
Then the city will deal with it.
Appropriately.
Okay, this is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Tyler.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
No.
Cardielle?
Yes.
Cloud?
No.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch? Hussein?
No.
It passes. Was it five? Five, yes, four.
Five, yes, four. No, this passes.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-fifth. Yes. Okay.
Excuse me, hold on. I just want to say something. First, I just want to say thank you for your service as a variance. Second, you know, the drain, I know is a big problem, and it has to be with the city. The third is about what we're gonna build in the future. You know, probably I share the property. You know, right now, it's gonna cost, you know, a little bit more. I won't make money. But if I build something, I will build along, you know, the back, along the properties, so it won't face anything to you guys' properties, so there will no lights, you know, that affect you, you know? And plus, you know, one of my things was to put some big trees, arborera pine trees, that will cover, you know, it will make and look nice, the property. And I've been working with other companies, people that is building here around the town, and we want to build something nice, you know? And probably, more likely, it's gonna be offices. So you won't guys, you won't, you guys won't deal with, you know, traffic and, because I understand, actually, I was late because city's growing, you know? The city's growing, and no one is gonna stop that. No one. But unfortunately, if we don't raise our voice for the planning people to do the best and create and make more roads, we're gonna have a lot of traffic. That's what happened. That was, that's why I was late, you know? But I promise that, that whoever, who buys the property, oh, if I build the property, it will be something that it won't bother you, because I understand. You know, I want privacy, and I understand that.
Okay, we appreciate your commitment to them. But once we rezon the property, anything that's allowed can go in, and we have to make sure that the standards of screening and all that is, is held to the city's standards with whoever builds on that, whether it's him or whoever buys it. The responsibility for screening and the way it's laid out is, has to be done to the city's minimum code. Okay?
Thank you for listening to us, and thank you for the guys who voted no.
Okay, we're down to Board of Adjustments. Next item is B twenty-three dash thirty, Robert Stone, presented by Jason Moles.
Hi, my name is Jason Moles. I'm a real estate agent with the Griffin Company. I am here representing Robert Stone. He could not be here tonight. And Mr. Stone had purchased this property in the middle of February this year. It consisted of two structures that are approximately fifty years old. And, and as you can see there, the lot to your right or the east is landlocked currently. So, so we're working with planning to merge the two parcels to remedy the landlocked property. In order to do this, my client is requesting the following variances to comply with the current city codes. Number one, to reduce the agricultural zoning street frontage requirement from two hundred feet to twenty-four feet, as the property is at the north end of Harper Lane. Harper Lane just, if you can see, yes, right there, Harper Lane kind of terminates right there at the property line. And so it's only about twenty-four feet wide at that point. The other is to accept a non-conforming structure that's existed on the property for approximately fifty years to remain intact. It's a cinder block structure on a slab, and to move it would destroy it. My client's already performed a lot of due diligence as to what will be required to bring water to the forty-eighth, from Forty-Eighth Street to the property. My client's already successfully completed two soil tests for, for septic systems, and we've been working closely with Sarah and Sharon in planning to fully understand all that's required to merge the two parcel numbers to one parcel to bring the property out of the landlocked state. As a result, the two variances we are requesting will help bring this property up to code.
Do we have any staff comments? I don't think we do. Okay, commission comments? Do we wanna take these together?
Sure.
This is a call for the vote. Is that a call for the vote by Mr. Austin?
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardielle?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you all very much.
You need to continue to work through with the lot combination and get all that put on there.
Yes.
Next item is B twenty-three dash thirty-one Nicholas Roy and Amy Ramsey, presented by Nicholas Roy and Amy Ramsey.
Good afternoon. My name's Nicholas Roy, resident of three zero one Black Oak Ave. We purchased this home back in November, and the, we knew we were gonna have some repairs due to the tornado that passed through the neighborhood at this time last year. Several trees have fallen on the existing fence that surrounds the property on all four sides. However, no side of the fence is in working condition at this time. We have tried to make do with the three-foot fence along the front and began making repairs where variances were not needed. And we're at the point where the front yard is just such a high-traffic area that in order to improve the safety and functionality for my family and our, our well-being, we would like to request the variance from three to six in the front of our home. The terrain shape also plays a great deal in this. The landscape is sloping. We feel that a six-foot fence will not impair any vision along the street. As mentioned, our main points are safety, functionality, additional privacy and valuation, or adding valuation to our property. At this time, I'd like to take any questions, please. Currently, it's going to, we're quoting a six-foot wood fence, and we're wanting to do the gate, and it'll all be similar. Right now, there's four different types of fence going around the property: chain link, black iron, and two different types of wood fence. And it kind of looks hideous from my point of view. So we would like to request, just kind of make some similarities there across the board, make it all one style of fence. We've already completed the section in the rear and have submitted, you know, photo, updated photos and things, if you guys would like to just kind of see what our plan is.
How, and how have the drainage by the fence?
The drainage is amazing. We have a drainage ditch right there along us on Black Oak. We're in the low point, sorry here. And, yeah, we're in the low ground, and it drains very well.
Any more questions?
My, my only thing is it's not gonna, we say it's not gonna interfere with the sightline on Brangeau?
That is a private drive, sir, and it may up until the easement where the utility easement, yes, sir.
Yeah, it depends on how, if you don't get close to Black Oak with the fence, and it shouldn't create...
Yes, and there is an existing, and it's setback, yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Okay, this is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Parker? Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardielle?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good night.
Next item is B twenty-three dash thirty-two Danielle Visa and Maria Valente, presented by Kevin Visa. I hope I said that right.
Yes, yes, you did. Hello, everyone, my name's Kevin Byesa and that was just, when we had a chance to put the portable structure in front of the residence, it's a small carport, I have the measurements of it and how far it is from the street if you would like to hear them.
Did we have questions from staff?
Ed, you want to address this one, because this looks like this is just kind of like a tent structure? Is it a, is it, has it tied down?
We didn't address this, I think this came from somebody else, but may have come from code enforcement, but this is a tent and tents are only allowed for 180 days. After 180 days, a tent comes what's called a membrane structure and there's no provisions for membrane structures within the residential code, so we'd have to go to the building code and the building code requires it to be engineered. And that means that's wind uplift and what we call pool loading on the, on the structure, so when it rains, it doesn't, if you've ever been camping, you got to push up the tent every once in a while to keep it from, from falling down. Both of those things would have to be addressed, so he would have to hire an engineer in order to maintain this structure. Other than that, it's just a, it's, it's your call as far as aesthetics.
Okay, so do you understand what he's talking about? This structure as it is can't stay there.
Okay.
Except for 180 days. After that, you're going to have to hire an engineer to design it, tie it down, make sure it handles wind load, all that kind of stuff.
Okay, so basically, like, get it built, is it, like, finally build it with wood? Like, hire a framer to build it?
Well, you need to talk to building inspection about that. Then you would need the variance if, if that's what you want to do.
Okay. I, I understand.
Has it even been there 180 days? Because I don't know when this picture was taken, but it doesn't look like.
How long has it been there?
Oh, probably like a month or two.
So why is he even here if he's allowed to have that for 180 days? Why is he even here? Because he has to have variance just to have anything. Gotcha, okay.
Okay, do you, you want to go back and look at how you want to do a permanent structure?
Oh, oh, yes, I actually do. Yeah, for a permanent structure would be better, yeah.
Okay, do you know how far out you want to come with that permanent structure?
Probably the same size that, that the carport is right now.
Okay, and so how far is it in front of the house?
It's, what, 24 feet from the street.
Okay. Yeah, I think you need to get with engineering and building inspection and determine what you're really going to do and then we'll table this and come back and address it as a, a permanent structure.
Okay, yes, ma'am, that's fine, yes, ma'am.
Okay. It may not be standing. Yeah, okay.
Next item is B 23-36, Elizabeth Ordaz, presented by Elizabeth Ordaz.
Don't get in a hurry, Jason, we're going to get to you. Okay, we have another structure, carport?
Yes.
Okay, it, it appears you widened the driveway out, did you get a permit to widen the driveway?
The pavement, yes.
Okay, so they had a permit to widen the driveway to the door. Okay, the structure that's there, is it tied to the house?
The recent, the recent one, the new one, no.
Okay. Ed, you want to talk about this one because it appears to have some design issues?
Yeah, if you, I'm sorry, Ed with building again. If you look at this structure and if you blow it up a little bit, if you see it well, you notice that, that it's overspanned across that and it smiles. The ends are higher than the center because it's already starting to, to sag down just from the weight of the structure. Good snow will bring this down, so it needs to come down. So if you want to grant a variance and they want to rebuild it, that's, that's another whole subject, but this structure will have to come down.
Yes, and, and that's what we plan to do.
Okay, I would suggest again.
Becomes an aesthetic issue.
Okay, again, I think you need to get your design engineer to work with building inspection and then come back and we know what we got, what we're going to get, what it's going to look like before we give you a variance, because this structure itself can't, can't happen. Do you know what the depth is off of the street? How far is, is it off the street? Okay, if you can't tell me, let's table this one and you get with engineering, I mean, with building inspection and come back with, uh, what you're going to rebuild at that location, but this needs to come down. Okay? Whoever, but you got to work with building inspection to get this one done.
And do I get the permit first and then?
Well, you better come up with a design and then we'll figure out what variance you really do need.
Definitely get a permit, though.
Yeah, a permit. Okay. Okay? Get with the building inspection.
Okay, next item is B 23-42, Hall Sisters LLC, presented by Engineering Services.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. We submitted this variance request prior to submitting on large scale, we submitted on large scale last week. The ask is, Wesco would like to put an 80 by 40 outdoor storage yard in and we would, our, our request is to screen it with an eight-foot wrought iron metal fence instead of the screening, screening fence requirements, I think was privacy, that type of screen. We're also going to have landscaping adjacent to the screen surrounding the, the, the storage area for, on three sides. That's the request at this time.
So are you accessing it from the street side?
From the building side, so that there'll be a door that's, that's from the, from the building into that area, so there won't be additional, like, truck traffic or any, any other traffic in, in and out of there, it's just, it's all, it's internal to the building.
Okay, and so you want to use a wrought iron fence?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? This is a call for the vote. What? Call for the vote by Mr. Tyler.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardielle?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
It passes. Next item is B 23-43, Crane RV, presented by Crane Investments.
So, Jason Apple with ESI. Crane was going to present the project.
You're bringing me an authorization, aren't you?
Late. Today, today, they, they, they couldn't make the meeting today. And so, I'm going to try to explain the, the variance ask. This picture is incorrect on, on the, on their ask. The, what I understand is, if you can go back to the previous picture, so the existing building, we enhanced the front of the facade with the previous large scale. In this picture, you can kind of see three different buildings on their main structure, if you will. There's a rear metal building that's 50 by 70, that's kind of added on to the structure. The facade of the other building improvements meets commercial design standards. The intent of what's requested is that 50 by 70 building be demolished and be raised from 16-foot sidewalls to 20-foot sidewalls for the maintenance of RVs and to be remain a metal building. Currently, it's a metal building, they would like to put it back, same size, four feet higher than the current metal building that's there.
Okay, go, go to the other drawing, so it's the existing structure that's there?
It's not, it's not the piece in the gravel that was back there before, it's, it's the existing building.
Okay.
The north, the north 50 feet of that building
Okay.
is a metal building that's attached to the block structure. They need that building four feet taller for maintenance or for RVs to come in and out of there.
So you're going to submit a revised large scale that shows that building's coming down and being built back on and it'll have the same materials that the front has on it, is what you're telling us?
No, it'll be a metal building, that's, that was the variance asked, the variance was basically.
What kind of metal, what kind of metal?
It's going to match what's there today, so it's just a metal, metal buildings, but the percentages of the whole, on the whole, so the remainder of the building needs the standard with full masonry. So this metal, the building is 36.
Really hard for the planning commission to make a decision on something that we really don't know what we're talking about. Can't see what it looks like, especially since we were confused about which piece was going to be
Correct.
Taken down. Do you need this, do you have to have this tonight or can you, have you submitted revised large scale yet?
No, I, I didn't know that was a, I mean, like I said, I didn't know that was a requirement. If it's basically a same-size demo and come back, is that a, is that, is that what we need to do? Or can they get a building permit to do that?
I, I don't, since I just now figure out what you're doing, I don't have an answer for you because I don't know what we're doing, basically.
What are they doing in the building now, Jason?
It's the same, it's, it's RV maintenance.
Basically, they want to make.
They just want to raise it, they just want to make it taller.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I thought they, they came in and had this discussion with staff about what they were, what they were trying to do, I.
Did any, did they talk to anybody?
We were under the impression that it, it was this building in the back.
Okay.
Start with the confusion, we'll get it straight, if we need to submit a non-large scale or revised large scale, we'll, we can do that.
Let's just table this and figure out what you need and then we'll figure out whether you need a variance or not, okay?
Understood, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I, I have to apologize, I do not have a planning director's report because I, I was on vacation and quite honestly, the time got away from me, but.
Can we wait for you to put one together?
I can send you and do it off the top of my head if you all want to, but we need to have our work session on April the 18th and we have the draft of the amendments to the Form 8 code to, for implementation of our new downtime master plan, I want to go over those, so that we can have the public hearing in May and have this ready to go to council in May. So that would be the 18th at 5 o'clock and we'll let you know where. We don't necessarily want to do it in here either at the fire station training session, training building like we had before or the museum, okay? We'll let you know that, which one of those it's going to be.
Okay, it's a good thing you said that, I would have laughed. We are adjourned.